A motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? Fran, please call the roll.
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Krueger.
Yes.
Mayor President Owen.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitney.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Great, is there another motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion on Resolution Number Twenty Four Dash R, I'll read it. It's a resolution of the City Council of the City of Porter Anzus, Texas, naming the future Porter Anzus City Recreation Center the Robert E. Clark III Recreation Center, and accepting a donation of funds from Robert Elder Clark III. Whereas, Robert E. Clark III, along with the Clark family, have made a significant contributions to the City of Porter Anzus by supporting its mission and recreation programs, providing safe spaces for the youth, sporting events, and fostering community development, and whereas, Robert Elder Clark IV has requested that the future of Porter Anzus City Recreation Center located at Seven Hundred Clark Parkway, Porter Anzus, Nueces County, Texas, be named in the honor of his father, Robert E. Clark III, in recognition for his contributions to the community, and whereas, Robert Elder Clark IV has generously offered to donate one-half of the net proceeds from the sale of the Porte Park, excuse me, sale of the Park PA Lot Number One located in Porter Anzus, Nueces County, Texas, to assist with development of the future City Recreation Center parking area, benefit in the community, and enhancing its recreational facilities, and whereas, the Porter Anzus City Council acknowledges and appreciates the generosity generosity and dedication demonstrating to Robert Elder Clark IV, which aligns with the values and goals of the City of Porter Anzus. Now and therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Porter Anzus, Texas, Section One, the Porter Anzus City Council hereby names the future City Recreation Center located at Seven Hundred Clark Parkway, Porter Anzus, Nueces County, Texas, the Robert E. Clark III Recreation Center in the honor of the late Robert E. Clark III. Second, the donation of one-half of the net proceeds for the sale of the Park PA Lot Number One, Porter Anzus, Nueces County, Texas, is formally accepted and acknowledged with profound gratitude. Section Three, the Porter Anzus City Council grants thirty-year naming rights to the future Recreation Center with a stipulation that any name change within the thirty-year period will require a full refund of the donated amount. And then Section Four, appropriate signage and recognition recognition shall be installed at the Recreation Center to honor the memory of Robert E. Clark III and acknowledge the generous contribution of Robert Elder Clark IV. Section Five. It is hereby officially found and determined that the meeting at which this resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law, and that the public notice of this time and place purpose of said meeting was given as required, passed, approved by the City of Porter Anzus City Council, Nueces, State of Texas, on the nineteenth day of December two thousand twenty-four.
Okay, so a motion to pass that resolution.
I'll make a motion to pass that resolution.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, Fran, please call the roll.
Yes.
Mayor President Owen.
Yes.
Councilmember Krueger.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford.
Yes.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right.
Yeah. May I add, I think it's really cool that his initial spell out R E C, I mean, I don't know if anybody caught that, but I think that's really cool. I think that's awesome.
Okay, um, we're gonna go through a quick piece of the agenda, but we're gonna move some things around, and Colleen, we'd like to move your presentation regarding the Rec Center, a preview of it up, so that if the Clarks wish to stay, and James, of course, we would we would love for you to do that, rather than sit around for a little bit more before you see some glossy pictures, so. Okay, so item seven is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Fraser, a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Fran, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Krueger.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitney.
Yes.
Mayor President Owen.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes. Okay, so item eight is which are items for consideration, so instead of going to item C, we're gonna start with item J, so Colleen, please come up.
So they can see it on the monitor?
What's that?
The, um, attachment in the council.
It's in it's in the packets.
But if you're on the monitor, then they could see it.
Yeah, how do we do that? Where's Peggy?
I need just one moment, I can.
Thank you.
Yeah, should you have a, oh yeah, should I have the live link in? Would you turn it on?
Do I do anything, Fran?
Well, she's got you.
So, um, while they're getting that ready, I'll just give you a brief summary of our progress. We started with, uh, Janakin Associates and Brinkley Sergeant Wingington, uh, Rec Center Design Specialist, uh, back in November, and we've been plugging along, um, looking at the site, looking at the adjacent aquatics facilities. And so we have a couple of different drafts, uh, to share with you tonight. One is an interior floor plan and some interior renderings of what the aesthetics of the space can look like, and then the other is a schematic design of the exterior, so I'm excited to share those with you. The process has been very detailed, um, I think we've really have the best of the best team working on this, and so we've done a community survey, we've, uh, done digital tours of other recreation facilities, um, to try and really hone in on what is gonna fit our community, uh, in the best possible way, and so I'm excited to share, uh, where we're at with you tonight, um, and how appropriate, uh, that it's paired with the generous loan contribution. I can't thank you guys enough, I think the community is, um, just so lucky to have folks like you to support programs like this, and it's, um, very much appreciated. Uh, what else can I talk about before our pictures come up? So, uh, when we laid out the Recreation Center, just to summarize what we're including in the space, this is the floor plan, and I'll work my way from left to right.
All pointed, so.
Oh, perfect, thank you. Vanna White. So on the left-hand side of the screen.
Well, let's do the entry first.
Okay, well, let me give you a site, uh, kind of reference. The zigzag in the upper left is the pool, so we're talking about being in front of the pool, Ross Avenue is where David is indicating below, and so the main entrance is that center lowest rectangle, um, it's a covered entrance for shade and rain, um, and you'll walk into an atrium, double doors that are, uh, glass. The check-in point is the desk on the right there, um, that's our control, and they have visibility down the hallways into the gymnasium, into the fitness area. Um, so it's a, a, a good spot to check in, uh, for all of the different amenities. From the main entrance, if you go straight up, that area is designated as the fitness and equipment area, so think treadmills, weight machines, and a clear glass wall in the back that'll look out into the pool area, so lots of natural light, um, big open space. On the right side is the gymnasium, that's obvious from the basketball lines, but there will be two half courts and a full court volleyball, and, um, we're looking at, uh, other lines as well, but that's what will be painted on the floor, and there's other ways we can bring in different activities. As you walk in on the right, oh, good point, yeah, so the stairs there, this is a, an alternate plan that you'll have to decide whether you want, um, to include in the project is a walking track around the perimeter in a second story. And so they're building that into our plan as an added alternate, that'll be optional when we look at the budget. That little square on the top is a concession stand that opens to the gymnasium and to the pool. Then if you come down, as if you're coming in the main entrance and you go to the right down the hallway, those are our administrative offices, so staff space, uh, workspace, storage, conference room, restroom. The big rectangle to the right of that is a group exercise room with storage, so wood floor mirrored walls with bar, space for spin bikes, yoga mats, yoga balls, all those, um, group fitness type activities. The bottom right is storage, so, um, gymnastics mats or the volleyball poles or anything, furniture that we would use in the gymnasium, uh, there's a big storage space there for it. If you go back to the entrance and you make a left, there's two spaces there, that front one that he's pointing at is designed for child watch, so, um, ideally, if mom wants to come and run on the treadmill, she can drop off, uh, eight years and under in that space. Um, and then that room, they were calling it the teen game room, but then they said, if you put the word teen, it, um, automatically repels teenagers, so we're just gonna call it the game room, and so that can be some screens for video games, it could be board games, it could be air hockey table, we can furnish it, um, to accommodate a bunch of different game activities, lounge type space. Um, above that is the locker room, it's a wet-dry locker room, so you can use it to, um, get ready to use the exercise equipment, or you can walk through it to the pool facility. Just up above that, there's three family changing rooms that include showers, so that's a nice private space, it's additional showers that we didn't have, and then they're going to put on-deck showers, um, outside as well, so we'll have a lot more showering capability than we currently have in our aquatics facility. To the left of the locker room is the space for lifeguards, so they'll have, uh, direct views of the pool, um, the bigger spaces for guards and assistant manager, the manager will have an office across the little hallway, and we'll have some interior climate-controlled storage for their tools and equipment that needs to be inside. To the left of that is a large kitchen, uh, it can actually be used as a demonstration kitchen for educational programs. Um, we've done some healthy eating type programs in the past that it's built out to accommodate that. To the left of that is a multipurpose room that can be divided into three spaces, this will be the main, uh, space for our youth programming, after-school care, and summer camp, but it can also be broken down to handle a craft class or line dancing, or, you know, any of, many of the other activities that we have to offer. Just south of that, or back towards Ross Avenue at the bottom, is another restroom, and then there's a set of doors in the hallway, so if we have kids on site, uh, we can close it down to the public, so that we don't have to mix schoolkids and the public, um, for safety purposes. There's two more storage spaces, and I think that brings us back to the entrance, so.
This is kinda gonna be, this is a little outdoor.
Patio.
Patio area, so when you have pickup for afternoon kids, they'll come in, drive in, and then kinda come up at a little angle and do a little pull-through, then they'll pick up right there.
Yep, um, start with page twenty with the schematics, cuz I think it's good to see the visual of how it lays on the property before you go interior.
Sounds good. It's. Fran may have to, I think it's, okay. Well, sneak peek, go ahead.
Yeah.
Let's just.
Close your eyes, yeah. Right.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Okay, so we've got a bird's eye view of the facility, you can reference the baseball fields, the swimming pool, Ross Avenue is David's pointing at. So just kind of slowly flip through, yeah, additional parking in the front. So the parking behind the facility, but between the pool and the baseball fields, that all remains, and then it'll be completely new, uh, parking in the front on the street side, and I wanna say it's.
Similar circulation, so you still have the full capability to do the loop that you can do now.
I wanna say it's something like a hundred and thirty-seven additional parking spaces, so.
And you can keep scrolling, Fran, through the next, cuz it's, it's the same kinda thing, but it just.
Different angles, yeah.
This is, yeah, this is from the rear.
It's important to see how it's gonna lay out with the existing pool.
Yeah.
They're adding a, um, outdoor basketball court behind the gymnasium, because we'd be losing the one that we currently have, uh, closest to the neighborhood. Ideally, um, we're looking at discussing, um, improvements to the aquatics facility, part of the, um, site work that they've done was a full audit of all of our aquatics, and there are quite a few, uh, improvements that need to be made, and so in the June Council Workshop, we're probably gonna be bringing you some pretty major, um, projects that need to take place in our, uh, aquatics area, including, um, removing the existing facility and, uh, reusing the pump area, the equipment that runs the pool, and housing that where it currently is, because of the plumbing, it needs to stay where it's at. So that will probably come to you at the June workshop.
And then we'll have somewhere, we'll, we'll figure out our naming on the wall somewhere in here.
The, um, this rendering is all gray, we did add some blue to the front to add a little bit of color as well. I think that might be in the, in the next one. There's the awning over the entrance. A waiting area for pickup or.
Yeah, one of the walls, it's either this front one, or one of them is blue now, just to give it a more, kind of match our more coastal theme.
That's from the.
And then she can't really tell, but this, there's real light shades of blue on some of these, it's just hard to pick up in the rendering, it's a little.
They took the color from the pool, basically, the, to match the water, to try and tie it in. And so you can see the glass, uh, from the multipurpose rooms overlook the aquatics facility, the fitness area also does, so lots of natural light, very open feeling. The concession stand is over there. The, um, family changing room doors are, yep, right there. And then they're looking at, you know, our existing shade structures at the pool are at the end of their lifespan, and so just enhancing the whole pool deck, adding cabanas, um, they're looking at everything there to kind of bring it all up and elevate the space and how it looks, cuz we're putting a beautiful new building next to a, uh, an aging pool, so there will be some work that needs to be done there. All right, so let's go inside.
Back to three, right? Page three, yeah.
So this is the entrance, the control desk we were talking about, there's, uh, TV screens that will show programming information. We'll have self-check-in kiosks as well, we use a software that, if you wanna come to your group aerobics class, you don't necessarily have to talk to the person at the front desk, you just punch in your membership number or your registration number, and you can, you know, welcome yourself in and go to the locker room or wherever you need to go. They have a box built in, uh, to the top there to allow more natural light into the space, make it nice and bright, tall ceilings. The fitness area is right adjacent to the entrance room, and so they're looking at adding a partition so that you don't walk right into the exercise.
Like a frosted glass wall. It would be kinda right here. Basically right on the edge of the brown, and then up to the ceiling.
That should help with noise and just privacy. You can see the view of the pool there, exercise equipment. There's the gymnasium with the second-story walking track, concession stand on the left. They'll have curtains that the windows can be blacked out, if you're, if there's like a basketball tournament and they don't want bright light shining in, they'll be able to block out the light. That's the hallway with the doors dividing the youth area, and it also shows the locker room entrance on the right. It's the fitness area from another angle, this is the multipurpose room, um, so they've got some screens on the wall for programming, and then those white walls are where the partitions would, uh, come through, so you can see that that space can be divided into three. There's cabinetry and storage, that's the concession stand. View of the concession stand again from the pool side. There's some shade on the exterior, so they even talked about, you know, you could potentially have some programming outside under the, um, awning there. That's what we have. If you have any questions, I'm happy to try and answer them.
It's very exciting, so when, before we have, um, a full set of construction documents to be able to go out for bidding.
They're working on the nitty-gritty details, like last week I answered questions about toilet paper holders and bathroom mirrors, so they're, they're really getting down into the details right now, so I hope to be able to bid at the end of February, we were talking about that. Eighteen months' construction puts us at, what, November of two thousand twenty-six for completion?
Exciting.
It feels like a far way away, but these projects go so fast, like it's gonna be before we know it.
Which gives us a couple of years, it gives us a couple of budget years to introduce the, uh, furniture and equipment, what we wanna put in it. Cuz that's not all in this one.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, even just the, um, several companies have contacted me about the fitness equipment and the range of things that they have available, it's amazing. So I just wanted to say thank you guys for your support, I really appreciate this, and it's such a fun project to get to work on, I'm excited for our community, so thank you.
Thank you. Lots of work on it.
Yes.
Good job, good job. Okay, so then we'll actually move on to item C, which is a resolution authorizing amendment of the city attorney contract with O'Starch Hillme McCauley P L L C by changing the firm name to Michael G. Morris Attorney at Law, setting effective date and authorizing city manager to sign all documents associated with said contract.
Okay, so Mike's partners have entered into retirement, and those are the three names, O'Starch Hillme McCauley. So Mike is the last one standing, so we need to make an amendment to the city attorney contract to, um, reflect that change, that name change. Now Mike still has his entire team, he still has, uh, McKibbin for all our T M L help, he still has, um, um, Robert Brown for, you know, our detailed city information and stuff like that, so same team, same price, different name.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? All right, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve authorizing amendment of the city attorney contract with O'Starch Hillme McCauley P L L C by changing the firm name to Michael G. Morris Attorney at Law, setting effective date twelve nineteen two thousand twenty-four, and authorizing city manager to sign all documents associated with the said contract.
I'll second. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, Fran, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Krueger.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford.
Yes.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitney.
Yes.
Mayor President Owen.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes. All right. Item D, discuss and take action to confirm the beachfront dune per protection permit plan twenty-four fifteen is consistent with the city's coastal management plan. The applicant proposes to construct in addition to an existing single-family residence and seeks to establish that no critical dunes exist on-site. The applicant is Garrett Kipke for the property owners Thomas Carlisle, property location is three-three-seven Dolphin Lane.
So in a strange turn of events, the next three are all submitted by Garrett Kipke, they're all on Dolphin Lane, and they're all no dune permit.
Yes.
No, I was.
And they're not related each other.
They are not related to each other in any way.
But we can just get right.
Except that Garrett Kipke came and did the first one, and so when the next two people came, I said, well, Mr. Garrett Kipke put together this dune permit, and I think they contacted him, and it's maybe a new little side hustle for him, so he's here today, if you guys have any questions for him, but I think that they're gonna be pretty, um, pretty easy to show you. So three-thirty-seven Dolphin Lane, there's already an existing house with an existing pool, there is a very big, large vacant plot of land right in the front where they're going to build. Basically, in addition to their house, it's not an A D U, because it's not gonna contain a kitchen, but they're building in that space right there. Obviously, no critical dunes, um, sent it to G L O, G L O said, you know, this is great, we don't really have any comments on it at all. Planning and zoning approved unanimously at their last meeting, and city staff recommends approval.
All right, any questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this, uh, permit application.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, Fran, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
Mayor President Owen.
Yes.
Councilmember Krueger.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford.
Yes.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, item E, discuss and take action to confirm that the beachfront dune protection permit plan twenty-four-ten is consistent with the city's coastal management plan, the applicant proposes to construct a single-family house and seeks to establish that no critical dunes exist on the site. The applicant is Garrett Kipke for the property owners I T Pad LLC, property located at three-ten Dolphin Lane.
So this is just across the street and down a little ways, it's the same situation, this happens to be a vacant lot, um, that they are going to build a brand-new house on. Again, there's no critical dunes, G L O has reviewed and said that they have no comments, planning and zoning approved unanimously at their last meeting, city staff recommends approval. Uh, you can see from the pictures, the pictures that Garrett included in this are really good, and just show that there's, you know, absolutely no elevation on those lots at all. Um, the dune protection line on that side only goes about halfway to that lot, so even kind of the elevations that you see in the back are not within a thousand-foot critical dune area, so it's about right there.
All right, any questions for Nicole, Mr. Kipke? Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve beachfront dune protection permit plan twenty-four dash ten, property location three-ten Dolphin Lane.
I'll second. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, Fran, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Christiansen.
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Krueger.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitney.
Yes.
Mayor President Owen.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, item F, discuss and take action to confirm that the beachfront dune protection permit plan twenty-four-eleven is consistent with the city's coastal management plan. The applicant proposes to construct in addition to a single-family residence and seeks to establish that no critical dunes exist on the site. The applicant is Garrett Kipke for property owners Wade and Brenda Bodie, property location three-sixteen Dolphin Lane.
So this is right next door to the last one, uh, Mr. Bodie is going to expand his house. To do that expansion, they do have to put in some piers in the ground, and the piers placement happens to be within that thousand-foot dune protection line. He doesn't have a current, uh, dune permit on his house, his house was built prior to those requirements, so he had to go through this process, um, there's obviously no dunes on his property, G L O has reviewed, they have no comments, planning and zoning approved unanimously at their last meeting, city staff also recommends approval.
Questions on this one? All right, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve beachfront dune protection permit plan twenty-four dash eleven, property location three-sixteen Dolphin Lane.
I'll second. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, Fran, please call the roll.
Councilmember Krueger.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford.
Yes.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitney.
Yes.
Mayor President Owen.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, item G, discussion and take possible action on amending the City of Porter Anzus Code of Ordinances, Chapter Nineteen Signs.
So a brief history on this, um, in two thousand fourteen, there was a Texas Supreme Court case that ruled anything that you do based on content of signs, so if you have to read the cover of the sign to determine if that sign is, is legal or not, is not constitutional. Um, in about twenty, the end of two thousand fifteen, the beginning of two thousand sixteen, we started, um, kind of beginning to redo our sign ordinance. The hurricane ended up throwing us off, um, and so we, we halted that process. In two thousand nineteen, twenty, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, I can't remember exactly when, um, somebody did approach us to add some L E D face signs rather than just the static signs, city council and P N Z reviewed that, ultimately, they decided to not make any of those changes. So at this point, our sign ordinance definitely needs to be adjusted for the constitutional issues that I think it has, that we haven't been enforcing, um, since then, so I don't think that we've done anything wrong. Um, we've kind of modeled our code enforcement to be legal with Texas law. But it's a good opportunity to make any changes to the sign ordinance that you guys see fit, so we're just looking for some direction.
So at this point, what we're doing is directing it, so council wish this ordinance to be reviewed to P N Z, it'll. It'll go through the process. Obviously, we can all have input. The public can have input, you know, to to something if. But P N Z will be kind of starting with initially just those constitutional changes that need to be made. And maybe that's all that gets done, right? Um, that's for us to decide. But I think that that's what this motion is for and um, I for one, think it's a good time. Um, I think that the city is going through a lot of changes, not only with our own wayfinding signage that's coming up. So I think it's appropriate that we review the sign ordinance at this time because we're putting up new signs ourselves, right? All throughout town, hopefully soon. Um, and I do think that um, there's some things that could be cleaned up a little bit. That's my personal opinion. So I would like to see. Things be a little tidier too. So um, I think it's a good time. Push it down to P N Z and let them look at it.
Well, maybe we've gotten a little lag since the hurricane. We had other bigger fish to fry, but I think we could definitely clean up some and. And maybe we definitely need to read through and see what we think needs to be updated or changed. I I agree.
I mean, if you guys see things around town that you like, that you don't like, uh, any of those suggestions would be great for us to pass along as well.
Have there been any violations in the last year? I mean, I've just asked. How many have there been where we're not even paying attention to our own laws?
Mostly the sign violations that we see are people putting out what we call snipe signs, like those signs that you, you know, they're just driving by and they, the mosquito killers or the. We're the best cabinet builders ever. I mean, we deal with that on a pretty weekly basis.
Um, and y'all do a good job of getting those and removing them.
We do.
I think, I mean, we don't have, when they do.
Um, I think last week they picked up about twelve.
Yeah.
Um, so I mean, they're, you know, they're pretty much on it.
Flashing signs.
Flashing signs, um.
A lot of the signs that like the the little ones that people put in their windows that are like, say, open or whatever, they have like. Four different settings on them, static, flashing, scrolling. And a lot of times the employees come in and. Just flat, put it on flashing and then we have to go around and.
It's gotten a lot better. So for a while, I mean, there was about a good solid year after the hurricane.
There's a couple now that I've seen that I need to tell Carla about.
Yeah.
Okay. So we are doing enforcement.
We're doing it. Correct. What um, what the state, I mean, what the Supreme Court said was basically, if you have to read the sign, you can't. Use that as a thing. So you can't really have different regulations for political signs versus construction signs versus, you know. Biz, regular business signs. You kind of have to have a sign ordinance for everything and kind of make it meet all of those other options. So it's it's going to make it a little more complicated in some ways, but a lot simpler in other ways.
That way they all follow the same.
Everybody follows the same rules, no matter if it's a business or, you know.
And I think, you know, we can look at different um. Just like we have with other things pertaining to the city, look at different sections of town as well, right? We may want. Certain sign requirements in certain sections. I know that gets a little dicey, but I mean, you know, again, we have allowed. RV parks in certain parts of town, you know, maybe there's certain signage that should be allowed in certain parts of town or certain corners or not, or. Just, I think it's appropriate to look at it as a whole and kind of where we see things moving, not only today, but in the future as a city. So um, yeah. Get ahead of it.
Yeah, I think it was two thousand eighteen.
Yeah.
Well, I went through it all again.
Well, I, at that point, I don't think we went through everything. I think it was just some specific.
P N Z two or three times, yeah.
Yeah, P N Z wasn't for kind of the changes that um, people were requesting be made and they came to that council meeting.
Yeah, so nothing changed.
Nothing changed.
So that's what we need. A motion to direct staff to send this back down to P N Z.
Okay, I'll make a motion um, to direct staff uh, to bring this to P N Z. For amendments to the chapter nineteen signs.
Make the constitutional adjustments. And the others that we see good.
No, if you guys have suggestions, my email box is ready for them.
Okay, all right, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, Fran, please call the roll.
Councilor Christensen?
Yes.
Councilor Crawford?
Yes.
Councilor Chambers?
Yes.
Councilor Kruger?
Yes.
Mayor for Timo Wynn?
Yes.
Councilor Witten?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes. All right, thank you Nicole. Item H, presentation from Broadest and Associates on Hurricane Harvey recovery. Welcome.
Michael's not coming up with his elf shoes.
Oh, very nice.
Come on, those need to be seen. Hello.
Oh, here he comes.
Are you seeing your pre packet? Uh, we're down to five.
I know.
Down to five projects. We're trying to work our way to have a job here, uh, shortly.
No, no.
Um, one project is ending up and another one's about to start. We're talking about public safety. Uh, it's looking good in there. Um, they got the doors in, the windows in. The walls are going up. It's it's really um, getting very close. Chief will not have his Christmas party in there like I promised. That with a financial officer, which was ill advised.
Oh.
Um, but it's looking really good. Fantastic building, definite upgrade. Um, the fire station, um. They had to redo some, a section of the concrete. Uh, that's all been engineer approved, uh, very heavy duty. It's ridiculously large rebar they're putting in. And some upgrades, whatever, stronger if you will. And that section is being poured Christmas Eve. Um, it's about, I think seventeen trucks or so, it's not that big of a war. Uh, so that is officially uh, going to be done. And they are starting block work, uh, I believe next work week. So you'll start seeing block going up and taking shape. So that's going good. Um, the gas project, working on a few hiccups, uh, logistics issues are being resolved. Uh, you basically last December, there's three sizes of. Meters and they started coming in. They were all residential, it was in December. The larger ones came in a few months later. All logistics issues are solved now. And we're getting back to the plan of knocking it out by phases. Um, there's fifteen phases and they're, what the plan was to knock them out by phases and they start getting uh, paid by the phase. Um, and all I believe proved a large pay up today for the gas project, I believe, or received one today. Um, the nature preserve, uh, that's coming to an end. We did a um, final walkthrough with the um. Contractor today walked the whole two point two miles and David actually walked with us.
Six one laughing about that.
We're glad you're back.
God, man, you guys are.
It was great. Um, it looks good. There's a, there's a punch item, uh, list that the urban is going to work on and they'll knock that out. And as you can see in your packet, uh, we had the ribbon cutting on July, January sixteenth, which I believe is the same day as the next council meeting.
Hmm, okay.
So that's Thursday, January sixteenth.
Yeah, it's good. It's it looks great. It it's so nice to have that trail system back online.
Very heavy duty. It was a really nice day out there.
Good, there were a couple of couples out there today, going out there walking it. It was, it was pretty weather. It was, it's, it's nice. Last uh, phase of the. Harvey.
Nature preserve.
No whoop of cranes, but it was a good walk. They're out there somewhere. We didn't see them. Um, the public works garage, uh, we're supposed, last meeting, I believe we say was supposed to get ninety percent drawings, first week of December. Uh, they had some issues with getting their numbers and logistics and things like that. They're going to provide a hundred percent drawings on ten January. To the city and and David and everybody's been tweaking the plans and uh, they still will not forbid the same original date. So the public works garage will have to bid on February twenty first. So hopefully we'll have a contractor and start that project. So, oh, into February. Um, you can see the projects approved to date, your your numbers there and the payments approved were now at eighty one million dollars and we still have plenty to go. Any questions? Just a brief.
We want to wish y'all Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
And thank y'all. Thank you, guys.
You and Merry Christmas.
Safe travels.
That's right.
To Louisiana.
Thank you. Happy New Year. See you soon.
Thanks, Terry.
Thanks, guys. All right, item I, resolution approving a change order number one for the playground structures for the parks and recreation department from Craftsman Commercial Playgrounds and Water Parks. In the total amount of eighty seven thousand eight hundred fifty five dollars and authorizing the city manager to sign all documents associated with said change order.
So this is for um, the landscaping at the playgrounds. We. Went through a learning experience. We went out to bid, uh. Had a higher than expected response, tried to bid again, no response. And so Craftsman said, we can help you. We'll add to our site work, the scope of work and um. Figure it out. And so we had a budgeted forty thousand and then uh, we did tree sponsorships. For the fourteen palm trees that were in the uh, landscape plan and we got our fourteenth tree sponsorship. About an hour before this meeting, so we have the funds to cover this change order. Um, and they won't put us too far behind schedule either. We're hoping for a ribbon cutting celebration around Valentine's Day. So they are doing amazing work out there. If you haven't been out to the park, it looks a lot different and the equipment is out there. I saw the zip line. Um, frames go up today. I think they're pouring concrete. Um, so you can see there's a tower out there, a planetarium, uh. Turtle head, there's all kinds of things uh, popping up every day. They're they're hustling. So I would just ask that you. Uh, let us finish this final chunk of the project. And thank you to all the people who sponsored.
On the tree. So wow, that's a big deal.
A big ask and the community stepped up, of course.
What's the estimated timeframe if everything goes good to be complete?
They told me a Valentine's Day ribbon cutting is uh, what we should plan for.
Wish us a Friday. Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution approving change order number one for the playground structures for the parks and rec department. From Craftsman Commercial Playgrounds, Water Parks in a total amount of eighty seven thousand eight fifty five and authorizing city manager to sign all documents associated with said change order.
I'll second. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none Fran, please call the roll.
Councilor Witten?
Yes.
Mayor for Timo Wynn?
Yes.
Councilor Kruger?
Yes.
Councilor Chambers?
Yes.
Councilor Crawford?
Yes.
Councilor Christensen?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes. All right, thank you, Colleen.
You, Colleen.
Thank you.
Okay, item K, resolution adopting the twenty twenty four legislative priorities for the eighty ninth Texas legislature. Directing the city manager to act with regard to the city's legislative priorities and providing for an effective date.
Okay, so we do this every year and the main, the main reason why we do it is because.
Every other year.
Oh, every other year, right. Sorry. Is because when you're perusing the halls and you want to bite a, bite a bill or. Or approve a bill or back a bill, they want to see that your council has discussed the item. And then it's on your legislative priorities list. So basically, the the goal is, is you kind of, it's a kind of a shotgun approach. Um, list everything you are for and everything you're against. And then that way, when the ledge starts. We can say, hey, we oppose this bill and it means that council truly opposes it because they've approved your legislative agenda. So um, on the third page, third or fourth page, you'll see. Um, basically it says the priorities, it has a, you know, uh, seven of the support. Support items and I'll just read through them because there's not that many, but support legislation that promotes local decision making to remain in the hands of our local elected officials. Every session, we see someone trying to come out to weaken city councils, uh, you know, rulemaking authority. So we always fight that one. Um, number two, that second bullet, bullet, I want to change that, the word support to um, create and file. So that one should read create and file legislation that promotes use of local hot tacks for Main Street beautification projects. That way that wording gives me authority to, you know, you know, write that. Write that law that we want, that we're going to have our ledge carry. So if we change that first word instead of support to create and file. Legislation that promote promotes use of local hot tacks. So third one, support windstorm insurance reform that provides affordable equitable rates. For the Texas coast. Um, our team, Joel and Patricia, who we hired, they added this fourth one. That's why it's highlighted. Support the relocation of Tua Agency Headquarters to a tier one coastal community. That's what Todd's been pushing for. Um, the fifth one, support D sal gold standard regulations. Um, that's kind of the, the, the standard of putting uh, everything offshore, which is your intake and outfall. So we want to support that. Support appraisal district reform. Um, support legislation efforts to build a second causeway to North Padre Island. That's the one that Todd's been working on. And then we get into our oppose, oppose legislation that weaken cities' abilities to regulate short term rentals, building codes and other zoning issues. They're constantly. Trying to attack those three main topics. So we want to oppose all that. Oppose legislation restricting revenue caps. Oppose legislation that limits cities' issuance of debt. They're always trying to say cities shouldn't be issuing CFO bonds, cities, you know. You know, a lot of times they say, hey, that every time council wants to spend money, they should go do a, a vote of the voters. And it would just delay, 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 and most stuff could get killed. So we want to fight that. Um, oppose legislation restricting cities' use of lobbyists. That one's been coming up every session over the last, I don't know, four or five. But they, you know, it's, this could be the last year you you have a lobbyist. So. That's a big one. Oppose legislation that prevents the Texas municipal league from representing its, that prevents the T M L from re- representing its member cities. That's kind of goes hand in hand with the one above it because they look at them as a lobbyist. Oppose legislation that weakens the Open Beach Act. And then this last one was one that Joel and Patricia added. That was monitor legislation that will assist with shoreline erosion issues. Along the middle test, Texas coast. Um, as an issue of concern in the general land office coastal residency state plan. So we'll just throw that one in there. It doesn't hurt anything. And then we always endorse um, the school district, U T M S I. Uh, Nuasis County Water Improvement District, uh, the Tourism Chamber and support for text dot. So those we just kind of throw in there at the end. But this is a, we, we adopt this by resolution. And then when, when we get around to having to go up to um, Austin. And I, some of you have done it, some of you haven't. A lot of times we just make a bunch of copies of this priorities resolution and we go. Hit the hallways and we just go and try to hit all the, all the, all the people that are either on the committee or, you know, that could oppose it. Or in, you know, we drop this off and say, hey, here's our city council's endorsement of your bill. We love it. Or, hey, we don't like it. Here's why. And we hand them out this adopted um, ledge priority list. So if you guys see things you want to add, we, we can always add to it. If, when January rolls around, if we need to tweak it, we can. Add something, take away something, whatever you guys need to do.
We do need to make some changes to the email addresses on this last page.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
So I think, I mean, I think it's a good first start and as we all know, the change, they, they changed fluidly up there once session opened. So at that point, you know, we can, we can tweak it afterwards at future council meetings, but it's good to have a starting basis as we roll into. The legislative session. Any questions? Any comments? Any other thing to add? Okay, so we have a resolution, we have a motion to pass a resolution to adopt our priorities.
I'll make a motion to uh, adopt the twenty twenty five legislative priorities for the eighty ninth Texas legislator. And direct city manager to act with regard to the city's legislative priorities and providing for an effective date.
And can you edit the second one to say create and file?
Oh, yes, sir. And hang on, let me read that. With an addition or a change on the second one on our priorities list to state. Create and file legislation that promotes use of local hot tacks for Main Street beautification projects.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none Fran, will you please? Hearing none. Fran, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Cougar.
Yes.
Mayberton Owen.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitten.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, item L, discuss and take action on creating a marine memorial in Roberts Point Park.
I think that would be awesome.
Yeah, so this this idea came up um back in November of twenty two. We were having discussion about how things get named in the city because we had named um, you know, the the public safety building, and then we had some requests for some other naming. And Roberts Point Pier came up. And at that time, we we said, hey, maybe a an opportunity was to name it a memorial pier and have memorial plaques on it. And they were like, well, maybe we could find a different spot to do it. And then that kind of idea, it was well received, but it just didn't, didn't get any traction over the next. I don't think it made it to the Goals Workshop in twenty three, but the ideas come up again. There's a picture in there from my old Alaska hometown, Cordova, Alaska, and it has a fisherman's memorial. It's really neat. And so you see um everyone would get the same size plaque. And then, you know, they can put whatever they want on it, but it it keeps it, keeps it uniform. So one one idea we had in Roberts Point, and Kelly came in yesterday, and we were talking about a couple ideas, and Colleen is still here. But one concept was over where there is the lookout. You have these these curves, these sidewalks that come in on each side. And one thing we could do is build a small little concrete stem wall that's about three feet tall, and the the top of it would be angled and maybe, you know, nine to ten inches wide. And we could, we could build it right here on this edge. And that would be like the first, you know, the first go round. And then as you fill that up, you could come back and build another little wall over on that side there, but that would be kind of your start. And then on the wall itself, you could, you could have the text, you know, whatever you name the the memorial wall or whatever. But then you could put these, you could put small, you know, bronze plaques on that. You know, the wall would be kind of angled. You know, the top of the three foot wall would be angled like that, so you could just walk along and read them. That's one idea. But if you guys were interested in pursuing this, we could, we could, you know, Colleen and I could come up with some ideas and maybe bring you back, you know, three or four locations that we think would work and how you would do it. And then you guys would have a chance to look at them and then, you know, see what which which option you like.
I think that'd be great.
I do, too. I like the idea. Um, I personally love the idea, and I've uh been approached by some of my friends who lost their loved ones this summer. If there was something like that, you know, even in the works, and I said, well, we actually talked about that in the past. And so I think it's a very appropriate time to bring it back up. And um so I was one of the ones that talked to David about doing that. I think we probably need to establish um how you would get a memorial plaque.
Yes, yeah.
Um, so I know this in general said fishermen's memorial, but we probably need to establish the rules about what what it means and how you get a plaque, right?
So yeah, I think we'd bring that back to you, too.
Okay.
I think in in Cordova, it's not just for fishermen. It's, I think it's anyone who passes away on the water, whether it's recreational, uh, commercial activity. But I don't, I don't think you open it up just for anyone because then it would just fill up instantly with even though there's great people in the city that if they, you know, I I think it has to be water related, otherwise. I mean, there's a lot of great fishermen in town, and I think if the if the only criteria was you had to be a great fisherman, you'd fill the wall up in a in a couple of years, and that really probably is not what this is about. I think it's a, it really should be limited to um people that pass on the water is should be the criteria, but we can bring that back to you guys. And you guys could look at, look at what we come up with as rules and and then and then you guys could take it from there.
Okay. And I think if anybody obviously has input on, you know, in the meantime, on statues, walls, plaques, you know, whatever.
Idea, I think you can put more.
Yeah, like this one's really neat because you just, and, you know, it's got a great overlook of the of the of the marina there and it's it's a great setting, that that one that I put the picture in there, but it's pretty neat. I don't know if you need the the angry fisher getting his arm up fighting the waves.
A lobster room or whatever.
Okay, well, thank you. Yes, if y'all will work on that and then bring it back. I think if that's the desire of council, it sounds like it. Okay. Okay, so I think we have a, need to have a motion.
Oh.
Make a motion on taking action on creating a marine marine memorial in the Roberts Point Park area.
I'll second.
Right. Any further discussion? Fran, please call the roll.
Yes.
Mayberton Owen.
Yes.
Councilmember Cougar.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford.
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Right, item M, ordinance first reading amending the Port of Angeles Code of Ordinances, Chapter twenty two Taxation, Article four Hotel Motel Occupancy Tax by amending Section twenty two seventy three Hotel Motel Occupancy Tax Advisory Committee Membership Terms Provided for Severance Reading and Effective Date. Hello.
How are you doing?
How are you doing?
So this is in relation to the Hotel Motel Occupancy Tax Advisory Committee. We're trying to add in some proposed language to stagger their appointments. Right now, it just calls for the appointment, but um they were all appointed at the same time. We did have some leave, so we have a little bit of a staggering going on, but this will guarantee the staggering. I was talking with David about it. You came up with some language rights for places.
Yeah, we want to mention, so when we say, so in the new language, we say four members shall be appointed on odd number of years, and three members shall be appointed on even number of years, but what we need to add is the actual places so that we we do it right now. So the four, so what we're recommending to say is for the four, four members co- or parentheses places one through four shall be odd number of years and three members places five through seven shall be appointed in even number of years. So if we could just add that, then we're 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 saying who's who.
So the even number of four on odd years.
Yeah, the odd numbers.
Of three on even years, okay.
Well, that's what it says, but it's going to be, yeah, places.
Even and three on odd. Sorry for the logic.
Right.
Might get confused.
Yeah, that makes a lot more sense.
Do it anyway.
Thank you.
We just want to, we just want to, yeah, list the places.
So if you want to say four places. Three, five, and seven on odd years and two, four, and six on the even years.
There you go.
All right.
So moved.
Okay.
That is all. There's no other questions.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so we need to approve the first reading with those amended changes.
Yes.
Dale?
I make a motion to approve the first reading of the Hotel Motel, Chapter twenty two Taxation, Article four Hotel Motel Tax for um setting places and members to alternating years with the four members going on even number of years.
Seats two, four, six.
Yeah, there you go. And one, three, five on.
And seven, one, three, five, seven.
There you go.
Okay.
Okay, just like us. I'll second that. All right. Any further discussion?
Hearing none. Fran, please call the roll.
Councilmember Crawford.
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Cougar.
Yes.
Councilwoman Whitten.
Yes.
Mayberton Owen.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
All right. Item nine, city manager reports.
Okay, two items. Um, update on the Dennis Dryer Municipal Harbor lease agreement with the Port of Corpus Christi. We had a couple citizens comment about this, and I'll fill you guys in. So um, when the lease was renegotiated in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, there was this, there was a clause in there that said, let me see, where is it? Uh, where is that clause? I don't even know if they put it on here.
They did not.
Uh, they didn't put it on there. So but basically, the clause said the clause said that if the city changes any of the zoning on Harbor Island to the negative detriment of the port, then they can, they can terminate the lease. That clause was removed on Tuesday. What, what was the day they did that? Tuesday? Tuesday. So on Tuesday, they voted unanimously, uh, the port did, the port commissioned to remove that clause. And so it is hereby removed. They sent us the amendment already. It's been signed by Kent Britton and myself. So it is officially removed, and I'd like to thank um councils work on that and the citizens work on that. It was a lot of people over the last six years putting the pressure on them, but I think Kent, the the new, the new port commissioner, Kent has been very responsive to the city. Um, he's been coming out a whole bunch and has met with the mayor almost quarterly since he took, I think he took office in Oc- or September of uh twenty twenty three. So he's, he's been great the last sixteen months. He's been really responsive. And um he really helped push that through and work the work the the port commission, you know, along with a lot of, you know, pressure from the from the outside world. But um I think without Brett's leadership, it probably wouldn't have gotten anywhere. So a big thanks to to Kent and um and his team for doing that for us. So it's, it's been, you know, we're really repairing that relationship, and it's, it is looking a lot better. Um, getting back on track to where we were back in the the earlier days when I first arrived to Fort Day, but it's, it's going good. So anyway, so that's that one's, that one's official and in the books and recorded. Any questions on that one?
That means lease agreements be updated then, or it has been.
Yeah, it's been updated.
Item seven.
Yeah, it's been removed and updated and signed and recorded.
So the other day when we were over there, I think you were talking to Kent, like he might come back over and give the whole council.
Yes, yeah, he wants to come over. He wants to come over in maybe January and give a, and give an update just on, you know, everything the port's doing. So um, I was going to circle, I'll circle back with him and try to get him booked for January, February, whichever one he can make, and come over and give a, give a, you know, give a update on everything the port's up to these days. And you guys can do a little Q and A with him. So, yes. Anything else on that one? All right, I'll jump to the next one, the the animal shelter location. So um the airport project has kicked off, and as you guys recall, the the pipe, that one pipe in the in the airport, which was the one that provided um connectivity to this land over here where we're thinking about expanding, expanding some hangar and the animal shelter use. Until that pipe was removed, it had connectivity and was deemed um probably untouchable. So um Lawrence, was it beginning of last week that they removed it?
Yeah, that was one of the first things they did.
Yeah, so one of the first things they did was they came in, and this pipe, you can see it when I zoom in on it, this this pipe right here, which you can kind of see where it's green, so water would come in like this and exit pipe. That's, that's been removed. So now any water on this side comes out and around down this way. So anyway, the 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 jurisdictional um letter has been redone by Josh Melnar, and I should have it any day now, and I'm going to submit it to the general land office. So we'll see what they say. Hopefully, they don't care what our uses are too much. The way that, the way the lease, the way the, the way the lease reads, it says primarily airport use, which gives us the indication that you know, if we're in the ninety five percentile, it's pretty good. So we'll see.
Right.
But you probably won't hear back from them.
No, it'll be after New Year's.
It's probably, yeah, Christmas holidays, okay.
Outside on that.
That guy from the shelter planners ever got back?
Yes, he did. I'll, um, he he did get back with me. Yeah, did I? I texted it to you, didn't I? Or I emailed it, forwarded you to the email?
Well, if you did, I missed it.
Okay, I'll I'll reshoot it tomorrow.
I'll look.
They wanted a big old chunk of money, which I was kind of shocked. I was like, what? Thought it was free.
They were doing a free assessment.
Oh, yeah, the free assessment was, well, the reassess.
That you need a plan and it costs this much.
That's what it ended up being. It was like, here's our free assessment. You need a plan that has all this stuff in it, and we'll do it for like thirty grand. And I was like, wait a second, what about the free? What happened to the free part?
The assessment was free.
I'll show, I'll show it to you.
Okay.
I was kind of bummed on it. Thought we were going to get something better.
That'd be something else like that.
Yeah. I'll, I'll send it to you again tomorrow.
Okay, what else?
That's it.
Okay. All right, staff reports. Darla, you're up first.
Please run along. Um, you have the written report in your packet. Just to talk a little bit about some economic indicators, hotel tax for the month of October was down sixteen percent compared to last year. So we made a little bit of improvement. We're down nineteen point eight for the first um two months. But our sales tax for those same months was up to almost eleven percent. So we're only down about four percent for the year. Harbor, um, it's hard to tell this early in the year, but down almost four percent for the quarterly billings and eight for the daily. Golf carts were done selling twenty twenty four plates as we are beach parking permits for twenty twenty four. We finished the year with six thousand one hundred and eighty nine golf cart plates compared to last year, six thousand one hundred and sixty seven, almost flat. Um.
Oh, that's hard to believe.
It is. It's, it's really flat. So the first year we started selling golf cart plates, I looked it up, was twenty ten. We sold seven hundred and sixty one.
Oh.
It's a new year growth. Um, the golf cart plates are in. We are going to start selling them on Thursday, the day after Christmas, so everybody can come in and start getting their plates. Beach parking permits are in and are are ready for sale, and some of the vendors came and checked them out today. So I know I G A got them. I'm not sure if any of the stripes gotten, but they're going to be out in the community. If anybody wants them for stocking stuffers, they're available here at City Hall for sure. Um, and our beach concession contract ended this year, and so it is out to bid now, and that will be coming to y'all in January. So if anybody has any questions.
I like that idea for stocking stuffers. I have a client that gets me one every year, and I love it. I don't even have to worry about it.
Everything is a beautiful shade of green this year.
Oh.
Beach parking permits, yes. Beach parking permits even match. Yes.
She was going with that.
I said beautiful. Yes. Yeah, and Corpus actually called early to see what color we wanted so we could match the plate to the permit. That's nice. So everything's green. Yep.
All right.
About it. Do you have something to do with that?
Okay, any questions for Darla?
Thank you, Darla.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Lawrence, you're back up, sir.
Quick, I'll sort of read up.
Oh.
Airport expansion contractors working out there. They're mostly spreading soil and compacting it at this point, that existing earth pile that's been there on the east end that you've seen there. They are now spreading that in the locations where the expansion will take place. They're doing some preliminary uh tests on the density of the soil and quality of it with field instruments, and it's checking out okay. Good materials, whatever it was where it was from.
Uh, let me, let me jump. Are you still on airport? Are you? Okay, go ahead.
I was going to say ditch realignment work.
Yeah.
Ongoing.
Let me jump in real quick. One issue we're having on the airport, this is the 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 one, two end of the airport right here, and in the project, there was three hundred and eighty, approximately three There was three hundred and eighty, approximately three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars worth of work. And what the work was gonna do was um, when a plane is getting ready to. Uh, take off, it'll, it'll come down the runway. And then it'll kind of do a little circle here and it'll kind of stage itself. Right here like that. And it'll do what's called a run-up. You're basically, you're getting your engines ready for takeoff. And if another plane comes in, it can still land and you're not in the way. It's a little tight and in this project was three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. To come in here and expand this a little bit. Come in here and build that out and then expand the, the um, pavement. So that a plane could be kind of nestled back a little bit further. They drove out here um, last week. And when they drove on this dirt right here. It was like quicksand. It started immediately pumping, which is when it's. It's when sand has so much water in it. It, you, it's almost like you're walking on a exercise ball. And so they had immediately pull off on it. So the, the, the structural, the, the engineers went out and looked at it and they were like. There's so much liquid in the soil. There is no way we're gonna be able to accomplish what we wanted out there. And so Tech dot aviation pulled it from the project. They're like. This is gonna be something else and we are not gonna fix it in this project. So they took the, they backed out the three hundred and eighty-five. K. And what they're doing is um, Reese, putting it back into the project. They had kind of made a mistake in that the engineers that designed the runway extension. Which is here and then the taxiway extension here. The engineer did not know that we have a severe. Gopher problem or mole problem and that this would immediately be tunneled under. And they would tunnel right through the twelve inches of, of limestone subgrade. And so they didn't realize that, hey, we cement stabilized base everything under asphalt. So that was, that was a pretty expensive change order that we were gonna have to do. So now. We're taking that three hundred and eighty-five K and rolling it into two things. Uh, providing cement stabilized base for all the new pavement. And to the pilots' delight. We have enough, there's, there's also that we're gonna. Uh, the, the contractor that's doing the project has a special overlay. Uh, it's kind of a. It's just, it's a liquid product that can overlay old asphalt. So I forget what it's called. It, it's, it's like a, it's a newer, better type of seal coat. And so we're gonna seal coat the entire runway in the taxiway. So in talking to the pilots. They're all ecstatic because they would much rather have. The entire taxiway and runway seal coated than have that little cul-de-sac at the end. So. They're absolutely fine with it. So. Just wanted to bring that to your attention in case.
And it fixes the cement stabilization issue, which.
Yes, the cement stabilization issue, you know, the fix was gonna be. Let's not just do cement stabilized base. Let's just build a. Let's dig up like a three and a half foot trench and fill it with loose concrete. And hopefully the, the gophers won't eat through it or dig through it. So. This is the way to go. So this is gonna do cement stabilized base under all the new asphalt. In taxiway and uh, it's, it's, it's the much better way to use that money. So anyway, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
Cause that change order's coming.
Yeah, I think it's a, a good redirect.
Yeah.
Beach lifeguard new facility. Talk with Emily Rose Paul today. She's gonna get that design rolling. Uh, she just had a few things she wanted to check in on. That'll, the process will start there. Hazard mitigation drainage phase two. Bid advertisement is out. Sealed bids are due January ninth. Uh, at three P M. So that'll be the second portion of drainage work. That'll encompass. At Avenue J, some dredge work out there where it eats up with the drainage for um. Is that?
Well, it's the concrete ditch. So it's this, it's this. It's where the concrete ditch comes out and dumps uh, on the other side of G and it comes around. And there's this plug. There's this plug of material right here. That really prevents the concrete ditch from flowing. That's why the concrete ditch holds water a lot. So this project enhances the Avenue J ditch. And it removes this plug. So that's the first one.
I suspect it's an alligator kingdom. Uh, so we have that and then pot, we're gonna also take bids on Kiwa Den.
Waian Lane, yeah.
Yeah. We don't know if that's gonna occur uh, per the amount of funding that we have, but we're gonna still take a bid and see if it's possible. And that is uh, addition of um. Square pipe into that area. Um, getting the water out of there. Right now it's just uh, surface flow.
But right now, so, so all the way down opposite um. Opposite beach walk. Is it beach walk?
Walk two.
Yeah, right opposite Kiwa Den Lane is the main drain and I'll zoom in on it. See these, these, these under, I think there's four of them. That go under the highway. So all these detention ponds. Um, that are in front of um. Beach walk one and two, Mustang, all these flow into the, into the highway ditch. And then they work their way down to this series of pipes. So they, they come each way on the highway. Then they go under the highway and then out. Out this drain ditch here to, and then there's a plug. Because we never did get a corp permit, but eh, there's a plug and it goes into the new Flato's cut. Configuration there. So this project. Gets rid of the open ditch and we go back with a seven by three or is it seven by two?
That was a five?
Seven by.
By three.
Seven, seven by three or seven by two foot, closed. Uh, reinforced concrete box culvert. Because right now the, the, that thing plugs up with sediment so much and. And it just overgrows with vegetation and we're constantly battling it. So. Getting the, the reinforced concrete pipe box in there will greatly eliminate it. And then the project does include. Popping through that plug at the end. And so we'll see a, we'll see a good. Drainage improvement along the highway. Cause that, if you recall, in really heavy rains. That whole ditch line for about a mile just fills up with water. Cause it's just. You know, usually there's giant cattails all in there and it's just usually just plugged. So we think it'll really improve. So hopefully we can pull it off and we'll have the funds for it. Sorry, Lawrence.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you. Community center, neighborhood park. Um, I think Colleen touched on all.
She took off, yeah.
But uh, substantial completion walkthrough was yesterday. I do believe that went well. I didn't get to make it out of conflicting item. We'll schedule that day. Um, fire EMS station. Uh, as Rob said, um, there were multiple inspections for that report with the structural engineers. They had to recheck multiple things. Took a little while, but uh, rebors in, vapor barriers in, um, doweling's in. And epoxyed. So they're ready for a pour that's gonna happen Christmas Eve, Tuesday, seven A M.
What's our ETA on that one? If everything goes good?
What, uh, the ETA for the finalization of that? Uh, fire department, September nineteenth of twenty-five is what they're saying right now.
Kind of like that police station that chief is supposed to have a Christmas party.
Now it's saying.
Yeah.
Public, uh, that's February, first week of February now. Nature preserve, North Trail Boardwalk, uh, pass substantial completion. Just minor work to do out there, missing some screws and a little bit of. Uh, minor woodwork damage to be repaired. Public safety building, wall finishes are ongoing. Sucko work ongoing. Sallyport is uh, it stuck goes ongoing. Steel towers are finished. HVAC work, C M U work around the generator pad are still ongoing. Uh, circuits and wiring.
If you want a tour, let me know. Mark came out last week. Bring a hard head.
Yeah.
So if you want, just give, give me a shout and. I can schedule a walkthrough with you.
Go to jail in this one.
Yeah, yeah, no, it looks good.
Looks pretty good.
Public Works Building, design phase at ninety percent. Plan to be put out for bid February twenty-first. Street and drainage bond. Um, Port Street will be milled and. Relayed after Christmas. Nice Street will actually start tomorrow. Um, that'll take. Also Saturday to complete. I don't think they're gonna relay concrete on it uh, at that time, but that'll be a demo. And prep for the new street. But it's really, uh, we appreciate the contractors working together for the fire EMS uh, contractors. They were needing. Uh, demo of that street cause it, the street's actually gonna be moving over seven feet west. So um. The guys working on the fire building were needing that demo so then they can continue the pad work that they're working on. So we appreciate the contractors coming together and helping each other out with their scheduling to shift work around. Everyone's playing nice. It's good. Gas support, yeah. Gas department building, the pad work uh, for that building foundation is completed. Underground utility installation and site grading are ongoing. Um, peers should be coming. Um, most of this work will start after the holidays. And community center renovation, uh, external restroom addition. Advertisements took place. We did sealed bid openings today. Uh, we had three bids submittals. It appears our lowest responsible bidder at this point, I need to do a little bit more research, is gonna be North Store Elite. They're, I think they're out of Houston. Uh, the bid came in at nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand and seventy-eight dollars, a hundred and eighty calendar days. So we will continue to research on them and recommend an award uh, next agenda. And that is all.
Okay. Any questions? A lot of projects.
Yeah, wanted to go.
Merry Christmas with that new baby.
Thank you very much, Lawrence. Right, Nicole?
All right, so um, as of November thirtieth, we have a hundred and sixty-three permits issued for new residential construction, which as you can see in the same timeframe. Over the last few years, it's pretty much in line with everything except twenty-one and twenty-two, which were quite heavy years. I think we're gonna probably end up in the. Hundred and eighty-five, hundred and ninety range by the end of the year, based on what we have submitted so far this month. Um, short-term rentals, um, I think are gonna top out at three thousand sixty-seven, um. Seventeen were added in the month of November. So typically when they start registering in December, we. Give them December for free and carry that registration over for twenty twenty-five. That's what we do with our contractors in town too. Um, so that should be your final number for the twenty twenty-four year. Um, Laura has done seven hundred and twenty-five inspections, including the hundred and twenty-five that she did in November. So she's been busy now. It's gonna be. Ramp up getting all of those approvals. Um, when the short-term rental is registered, she goes through and checks a number of things, open permits. Um, different things that she checks. So she doesn't just kind of sign off that they paid. She makes sure that they're in compliance with everything that they need to be. Uh, we only had one complaint last month. It was a. Very happy wedding in Paradise Point that was quickly taken care of. Um, so that leaves us with thirty-eight complaints so far for the year. Um, twenty twenty-five registrations have started. She's approved a hundred and ten so far. Fifty, a little over fifteen hundred people have already paid for their registrations and are just waiting for her to approve before they get started. Mostly our. You know, life in paradise, cinnamon shore kind of establishments that get on it really quickly. Um, for the month of November, we had thirty-nine code cases, mostly uh, high grass and weeds. Lots of brush piles that currently we're just sending um, courtesy notices to let them know that that brush pickup has changed. Lots of snipe signs like we talked about earlier, Dale. Um, a lot, uh, we're seeing kind of a lot more boats and trailers being parked in the travelways without being attached to a vehicle. Um, that's something that we're kind of constantly fighting again. They issued a citation for working without a permit and uh, between code enforcement and our building official, we had to issue two stop work orders. Um, so the brush pickup was just last week and already we're seeing a lot more brush piles out there. Um, so our code enforcement officers are asking for some direction on how do we wanna start handling that? Do we wanna start? Writing citations for people? Do we wanna just keep sending out the courtesy notices that say? Hey, please understand that the brush pickup has changed. Those letters, when we send them out, we are asking them to, to clear their brush. If it's really far away from the next pickup. Um, a lot of them are not. So it's.
And what is, what? I mean, do you get a response? Why? They're just not responding period.
They're just not responding period. Um, it's mostly. I, I would imagine that it's mostly second homeowners. Um, but, but I can't tell you that for sure.
So it's, but, but it's mostly residential, not commercial businesses.
Hundred percent residential. Commercial businesses aren't allowed. My son needs to take his medicine. Um, uh, commercial establishments are not allowed to leave their brush out. They have to, they don't have a, they don't have a bit, a pickup the same way. So it's all residential.
Are there any like strategic areas where the brush keeps appearing randomly?
I mean, mostly Old Town. Um, you know, there's not really as much on Eleventh, but some of those. Side streets on Eleventh Street, um, the short-term rental heavy areas really aren't that bad. Um, I think mostly because they have landscapers that come out and do theirs and they, and they know better.
Did you put like brush pickup on the trash bills, the little postcards?
We put it on the trash bills, we put it on the website, we put it in the newspaper, we put it in our notices. We sent it out to the short-term rentals.
He gets the snipe signs and say.
Flyers, I'll put one up.
We did that. Um, you know, I don't know how to get them. We put it on Facebook.
And it's been, I mean, it's been.
It's been.
Nine months, probably.
I can't remember exactly when it changed.
Yeah, probably April, so close to nine months.
June was the first other month pickup. I don't know for sure. I can't remember. Um, but it's. You know, it's not the same people that are putting out. I think once they get the courtesy notice, they understand. Um. But I don't know. I don't know what the solution is there.
Well, the solution in other cities for violations that get ignored or that the city takes care of it and then that customer gets it built.
That's what I'm thinking.
So.
I think that's better than a citation situation. I think it gets the, gets the. Problem solved pretty quickly.
Right.
I'll tell you one problem, cause I happen to have a few vacant lots. People like to powder brush up on.
Yep. And one, once you have a little tiny bit there, um, people just add to it. And, and we unfortunately have had to talk to a lot of people that are like. It's, it's not my brush, but it's your lawn and you still have to take care of it. And. That's the worst conversation to have with somebody because it's not their fault, but it's also not our fault. But ultimately they're responsible for taking care of them. I don't know a solution for that either or else I would do it.
Like we used to do it.
Before the hurricane, we only got it twice a year.
Yeah, I mean, I think weekly was probably overkill. I think every other month might be. Obmatic, especially during hurricane season, um. Especially during rainy season, if it ever rains again. So I don't know.
We still get picked up more than most. I have a friend that lives in Corpus and they only come what, once a year.
Twice a year.
You can take your.
Brush, okay, maybe bulky, but yeah. Bulky, yeah.
Yeah, and we do tell people all the time, you know, I mean. I don't know. I don't, I don't know the solution. I think that the city taking care of it or having a contractor take care of it the way we do with people that don't respond to mowing their lawns is probably the best way to go.
I, I think it is and then it just doesn't sit out there as an eyesore as a detriment.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
So we do like weedy law.
Right.
Yeah. And, and they do it pretty reasonably. I mean, the people that go out and mow this. They charge us like a hundred bucks. We just pass that along or lean somebody's property for that. Um. Yeah, that's what I would, that's what I would suggest. Um, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay.
Beach access road one B, Nicole? Sorry.
Um, so we have the dune permit. Uh, it is currently in review with the G L O. They've provided some initial comments that Stephen is responding to. So I think we're. Right on track to have that at the January meeting. Um, should move forward. I don't think there's gonna be really any big issues. Uh, cinnamon shore also submitted a dune permit for the area next to our beach access road. So they should be looking at this simultaneously.
Then we should have construction plans early February, so we'll be able to go out to bed as soon as we get the. The dune permit and the approved set of plans.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you. All right, chief. You're up. All right, Chief, you're up.
Okay, so let's see, we had, for the police department, we had fifteen hundred, just over fifteen hundred incidents. Um, my dispatch center entered six hundred and seventy-nine nine-one-one calls. And they dispatched the fifteen hundred and forty-three for the police department, uh thirty calls for animal control. Um. Hundred and thirty-six for the constable's office, three for the coast guard, six calls for Porter Ranch's C M S. Ten calls for the fire department and twelve for the game wardens, four calls for lifeguards, two for parking enforcement and twelve utility calls. So that's what the dispatch center handled. Um, we had a hundred and forty-four total charges filed with the municipal court for the month. Uh, and twenty arrests. Animal control officers responded to thirty calls. Uh, they were able to adopt nine animals. They took in nine animals. And seven animals that they took in were reclaimed by their owners. Um, out of the arrests we made during the month of November, uh twenty-two total charges were filed against those. Uh, arrested, six people were arrested on six warrants, six charges were for alcohol-related offenses. There were two charges for drug-related crimes. Uh, one person was charged with an arson. One person was charged with fleeing from police and one was charged with weapons offenses. And some offenders were charged with more than one offense. Um, the traffic, there was a little bit of an anomaly in the, and we, we figured it out after the fact. On the court report, it shows that eleven people were arrested for public intoxication and that number was actually six. And we were trying to figure out why that number was off. And what happened was that they entered some arrests from the month previous. And when they ran the report, it brought, it ran by the file date and not the offense date. So it added a couple of, of ones that came in at the end of last month that they entered at the beginning of the month. So that was, that was the anomaly there. Uh. But you can tell our parking enforcement is not, she's on break. Uh, significant events. Uh, we had, my dispatch is, is full. We have twenty-four sworn spots for for that. We have twenty-three filled positions. I have one opening. Uh, as of right now, unfortunately, I will be losing one uh member in January. He's gonna go be our constable. Monty's moving over, so I'll have, but I've got some good applicants in. Um, and we're gonna be holding interviews at the beginning of January. So the first week of January, I think. So knock on wood that we'll be able to, to get that. Uh, we just completed the, the annual toy drive. I'll be able to give you some numbers on how that went uh at the next meeting. We just did toy delivery on Tuesday. So uh we'll get all of those numbers finalized. And then some of the other stuff we've been doing, um, the last couple of months, Lieutenant Henan and I have been working on a, on an app that a wellness app for first responders. Um, and we're getting ready to roll that out and it's gonna be available to all the employees of the police department right now. Um, we're hoping that we can expand it. Once we kind of get it, all the bugs worked out, expanded into fire and EMS as well, but it gives their spouses uh access to the, the app as well. Some of the features of it are gonna be uh, there's some nutrition in there, there's some workout plans. There's some mental health assessments that you can do. Uh, and then there's a lot of peer supports options in there to where they can reach out and get peer support if they're, if they're having anything. Uh, and we're working on getting a clinician that specializes in first responders. Um, mental health onboard to help with that and just have another resource and tool uh to use. So um, we're hoping to put on some training. I'm working with Daniel about bringing in Dr. Glenn. She's out of Cedar Park. She's uh really big in the, in the PTSD. Uh. Counseling for military veterans and first responders and she's doing some really, really good work. Um, we're hoping to bring her in and do a, uh, she's got like an hour presentation where she kind of talks about resilience and, and all of the accumulative effects that stress and trauma has on first responders. Uh, when we get that scheduled, y'all are all invited to attend. And if you have a chance, I think you would be really impressed with her. Uh, she's out of Cedar Park, so it's not too far. And then uh we're gonna see if we can't get her to do some peer support training for us as well. So, and we're hoping to maybe bring her onboard as a clinician uh in the future. Other than that, we're just waiting for the building to get done. Spring break, that's what we're gonna be. Spring break.
You'll be good. You wanna be in a little before.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions for Chief?
No.
Okay, thank you, sir. Happy Merry Christmas. All right, so item eleven, city council comments and items for future consideration.
Dave, anything, stage three water restrictions, anything we're gonna, I know that's all started Monday, anything we're gonna be. Uh, we're getting our well in. Yeah, so I mean, we're gonna be good, but I mean, we're, we really don't have anything to do with it. I mean, it's not like any enforcement on us, but you know, how long, we, we don't know really how long it's gonna go into effect unless it starts raining.
Raining in the right places.
But yeah, we should have a well in in about a week. So we'll be able to water a lot of our new vegetation. We had our well guy come out uh Tuesday and did a, did a, did some tests, some test plummets uh around the outside of the outfield fence at the softball field. He's, he liked it. He thought it was a good spot.
And that's where you were gonna.
And it's great, cause we got, we got electricity that runs to the scoreboard, so we can run, you know, just stub in off of that. And uh, you know, run the electric to our pumps. Then we'll have a five thousand gallon tank. And so we'll pump and slowly fill that, fill that tank overnight and then we can go take the water truck. Uh, fill it up and then, and then water as needed.
Especially at the parks. Okay, anything else? Just wanna say very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody. See you in twenty twenty-five, if not before.
Yeah.
That's right. Okay, we're adjourned.